Okay, good afternoon. This is the Conservation Commission's special meeting Thursday, April 4th, 12 o'clock here in Town Hall. First, we'll do a roll call. Want to start with Ann, do you want to start first?
Here.
Yeah. Linda Andros and Schweitzer. I mean Susan Schweitzer, Robin Bates-Mason here. Next is approve the March 14th minute meetings, is there?
Know that John's not coming?
I approve.
I'm sorry, do you know?
Do we know that John's not coming?
No, he is absolutely.
He is, he was going to, but now he's, he emailed me this morning that he didn't know he'd be able to dial in.
Okay.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of March 14.
Second. Any, good? Right, thank you. Third, public comment. Anyone here online? No. Or did we just, did we just go out online? No, okay, we're back on. The next, the next two agenda items, we thought that John was going to be here, but was the Connecticut Law and Water Company land sale notification? And Tiger, since you're here, the law in Connecticut is that through PURA, the Public Utilities, Utilities Regulatory Agency, that they have to give land trust 90 days. There are two links, one without New Canaan Land Trust, one with them on it. It is under the land trust that has to give the information to PURA, it's not to the, the water company to go after to find the information. So we just need to speak with PURA and see, make sure one of the links isn't acceptable. But is there any protocol Tiger on the town side for when land? The law sounds like it just has to, they just have to reach out to and give land trusts 90 days, but do they have to give town?
Not the world.
I think so, they, I only know this because of my time in Norwalk, but I, and I know that the first taxing district is a registered public water utility and they are obliged to.
They notified us.
Yes, that's my way.
We, we received notification.
Yeah.
Of it, of the sale.
So is there, so land trust should get notification, because the law I saw just said land trust, so, but what's the, will it come to the Conservation Commission as well if anything's ever brought up again? Because it sounded like from a previous meeting that it went to town, but whoever answered the call wasn't interested.
Certainly make sure that that happens, doesn't happen that often. You can certainly make sure that you, you're aware of it. This one we're aware of.
Right.
You know, because we're involved, but the other ones. So I took it more on the side that they were notifying us of the pending sales, it's like, okay, good. But the, if, if in, if in the future it comes about.
Yeah.
Certainly make sure that it circles back with you.
With the Conservation Commission, yeah, I think that's just what. So if there's protocol in place that it comes to the Conservation Commission.
There is, yeah.
I also believe it has to be publicly noticed. I recall, I think unfortunately, because this, this regulation is so old, you only have to notice in your, in your newspaper of general circulation, which of course nobody reads anymore.
Right.
They haven't caught up with the public notice. But I do believe they have to do that as, because they are, they are lots, they have to go to public auction. Unless the town wants it and now the Conservation Commission has a chance.
No, I don't think they have to go to public, they have to, the law is now that they have to give land trusts 90 days notice before they go to a developer or anyone else. I'll send you the, the, the new legislation.
Okay, this is. On the chess, it's 277. Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. But it might be old, I've had this for a long time.
Yeah, because what, what I read, the, the new that's out is that they have 90 days they have to give and it said before they can contact a developer, so let me look that up. They also had two links to PURA and one had New Canaan Land Trust on it, one did not, and that just worries me because the water company can always just claim, because it's up to, you know, that water company doesn't have to seek out if they don't see it on the list.
But the town would know to seek out.
Yeah, well, we should definitely.
So if we have the protocol in place and it comes to the Conservation Commission.
It's not a town, you know, it's a private, non-hop property, not a town.
For selling it to a private. And you'd certainly know about that because every neighbor in the, in the community would know.
Right. Did we get that? Okay, so um, next was going to be canopy trimming with Eversource, but that was going to be John talking about that, so. Tiger, do you just want to give us a quick update?
Yeah, well, they come in every year for that, it's, it's their, their tree trimming exercises that they do. This year that they'll, they've actually pretty much started and they'll run for the next three months or so. In various areas in town, trying to see if I can call up the map for you. But it's about 60 miles worth, they're doing some enhanced tree trimming, some backbone trimming, that's the larger amount of work that they do whereby it's eight feet either side, Florida sky. And then some, just some maintenance trimming itself. So. See the, anything in red is what's called their enhanced tree trimming, backbone trimming. And then the rest of it is scheduled maintenance trimming itself. So they're looking at about 59.15 miles total. Backbone trimming is 20.85 and the scheduled maintenance is 38.3. Very similar to what they've done in the past in town. By mileage, I should say every year. It varies as to where they're working throughout town, where they're seeing problems or, you know, they've got their arborists and they directly drive the roads to see. So we're seeing outages or where they're seeing growth, then they come back through and they're going to schedule to come out through town. This is about the average of what they, what they do annually for us. A little bit more on the backbone trimming this year than there was years past and backbone's the only one that I get concerned with because that's a lot more trimming, if you will, but they have to talk to each resident while they're in front of their houses, you know, so the residents are aware. We put it in Gianna's first newsletter.
Right.
That went out last month. We had it as a news item on our website for a while. And then we've tried our best to try to put it out to everybody that, that possibly, you know, would have a concern.
And the, and the residents have to sign off on it?
For theirs.
For their, well, yeah, for their, in front of their own property, what happens if they don't sign off?
If they don't sign off, technically, they, they're not granting permission, right? So then it gets into a discussion between Eversource, our tree warden and the neighbor, and we've had situations where neighbors have said no. You know, and then their trees have caused outages for everyone up the, up the way.
Right.
We necessarily don't, you know, at that point in time, we start talking to them a little bit more about, you know, the, the nature of it, what it is for and why. But we still have some that are holdouts. The majority of the people, once they understand exactly what's going on and understand the nature of it, tend to then say yes. And then allow the trimming. And then at that point, Eversource kind of scales it down a little bit in front of that residence, just to make sure that there isn't so much of an impact. The resident is allowed to say no, and then Eversource skips the house. But then, when they do that, we have had problems in future, you know, with outages at the house, causing outages up the way. You know, doesn't affect, doesn't necessarily affect the resident that's there.
Yeah.
I, I think as long as they're not sort of clear cutting, by that I mean they just take a big thing and go straight down. They're a little sensitive to the growth habit of the tree they're working with.
They are.
I don't, I have, I personally have not had issues with them, I found them actually very collaborative.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, if you actually sit and speak to them, most of the residents just say no immediately without actually having a conversation, then when we have a conversation and they understand it, the majority of them say yes, there are still some that won't. You know, but the majority actually then understand what's going on. And their, their tree crews are very responsive, it's Lewis, and they do a really nice job. Through it.
But you need to be there when they're doing it.
It's, it's helpful to be there, you know, just so you make sure, but the.
Different crews come in to, you know, from what initially, initially granted, you know, somebody comes up to your door and you grant access and then somebody else comes along and does the trimming.
You're going to remove the tree or just trim?
No, no, because the marker, like any marker is just basically a, it's pruning or removal, right? And they don't necessarily mark any of the trees per se, they come through and, and they're notifying us, we notify, and the residents are notified, so the, the, the actual notification say that the tree warden has for state statute, doesn't necessarily apply at that point, because the resident's being notified directly. The other one is, in essence, you, you put the marker up because you want everyone to understand what's going on. This one here, we're talking to the resident directly and we tell the resident exactly what's going to happen around that tree, around that line. So like I said, the enhanced is the only one that I get worried about, the backbone trim is the one that I get worried about.
So the only thing that came up at the last meeting was that it, so that, you know, they, they get the owner's, property owner's signature, but I was saying that some people had not signed and yet their sig, their, a signature representing them was on the.
Haven't heard of that. So, you know, the, we can certainly go back to Eversource, their, their arborist Sam Berg has been very, very cooperative and very responsive, so we can go back and say, and I have a hard time with that one because I don't know Lewis would actually, there's no benefit for them.
Right.
Actually for signature, if you will, there's no benefit whatsoever.
Yeah, unfortunately, he's not here, so I can't.
I, I, I'd have to go back, I'll go back to Sam and say, listen, we got to complain about it, you know, can you look into it? You know, and see if he's heard about the same, the same thing, that's the first I've heard that, that, that's happened, I just don't see that. Lewis doesn't, the tree, they don't benefit from it, right, they don't, they're not, they're not gigged on it, they're not marked on it, they're based on time, you know, so they're not, the worker's not benefiting from it at all. Correctly.
All right, so next, Bristo and so the Centennial Planning is, Celebration Planning is coming up, Land Trust is meeting on, I think it's April 24th or so to talk about going over with that. And I don't know, Tiger, if you want to mention about what was just approved by the BOS, the, the sidewalk and the parking.
Trying to get that.
Chris sent out an email.
The open. Well. So the, what was approved, basically two, two things that happened, we'll talk about Bristo as kind of a bigger one, but the this is the work at Bristo itself. So it's, we're in the Phase Four. Work is slated to begin very shortly. Contractors aware of the fact that needs to finish by September 8th, since that's the celebration. Should not be an issue per se for him to finish. The benefit of the, that it's Peter Lonnie Incorporated, again, he's done all the work in, in Bristo, he's done a fantastic job. And he really wanted this one as well. And the sidewalk work that was just recently approved as well, he won that contract, so he owns both sides.
That won't be done though before.
That's the goal.
That's the goal it is, okay.
Sidewalk from Park Street to Bristo completed with the pull off as well by September, so both sets of work. And I told him that this was the only one that actually had a, of his work, this is the only one that has a celebration sitting on September on the backside, so this one takes priority over everything else he's got that's, that he's doing for the town.
Okay.
To give you a, an overview, this is the overview plan itself. Mead is at the top and we have kind of two highlights of work that I'll get to inside Bristo itself. But leading into Bristo from Mead Park, parking lot up here, this is the parking lot, the two baseball fields. And then just further north out of the picture is Mead Park Lodge, where the apple cart is, and there's a flexi pave road coming in, trail, if you will, walkway. And the entire distance all the way to the main entrance of Bristo off of Mead will be all flexi pave. And then along the baseball fields, there'll be a subsequent walkway made out of flexi pave to the lower trail. That one is what, what we consider to be a, a much more senior friendly and we're, we're trying to make it ADA compliant all the way into Bristo through here. That gives us access, ADA access to the, to the baseball fields as well. And gives our parks crews access somewhere into this area between the two baseball fields with a trailer or equipment. And then we're going to narrow the walkway down at that point in time.
And that's going to be done before September?
Going to be done before September, this is part of the, this is, this is all part, parcel of this, of Phase Four. We combined two projects into one, the Phase Four for Bristo and this walkway to, together into one project. Just because of scale and size and also we wanted to make sure it was done. So then if we get into the work in the, in the park proper, this is along the main trail coming in from, from 106, on the right hand side will be a another trail coming off to a grotto and inside that grotto will be the, will be a statue of St Francis of Sissy, Francis of Sissy. And then another large area of work is as you're coming in on the main pathway and it splits to go to the pond to the left. Send the triangle between the two trails coming in, there's a large area of planting on both sides of the, of the trail itself. That'll be done as well, so there'll be some trail enhancements and then a large amount of planting that'll go on through there, so that's the majority of the work that's, that's occurring. Bristo, as I mentioned, if you look at the overview map, the grotto is just past the pond on the right hand side. And then that area between the two trails and the pond is the largest area of work that's, that's being done. And then there'll be some enhancements at the two trailheads coming in off of Mead to accommodate.
But that, sorry, just, where you're saying where the most work's going to be done is, that looks near the Cam Hutchins Garden, is it?
Cam Hutchins Garden is right here.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So just next to it.
Next to it, yeah.
Across from it, yeah, but this is the meadow, this is Cam's meadow, right?
Yeah, okay.
So that's, that in essence is all the work that, that's slated and the selection approved it, contracts are being signed. I gave them the notice of award yesterday, need to get the bonds and insurance back, then they'll get their contract and they'll be able to start have a little bit of work that they're doing right now at the playhouse, and then once they're finished the playhouse, it should be done tomorrow. He's going to Bristo to, to stay full time to go do that work.
What is the date of the Centennial again?
September 8th.
Question on the pull off and probably for the Parking Commission, how do you, is that going to be deemed for Bristo visitors only, like if you have landscaping trucks parts in there, will they?
That's, it's a great question, so I, you know, I don't know if the, on that far. As, as far as like, are we worried about that happening, is it for, it will be for Bristo, you know?
Right.
We're, we're building it for Bristo.
I used to live on that corner, so that's what I'm asking.
Right, right, the the, but I can't, I, I guess we can ask Parking to come by and take a look. If you will, you know. And, and then.
Just wondering if it's, if there'll be a time limit, if there'll be, but that's for the Parking Commission.
We, so we sign everything else in the park, three hour park, right? For the main reason in the park is because we're having people parking and walking to the train station. And then parking all day, right, so we, we try to say, okay, well, what's your visit, you know, for a baseball game or, you know, coming to the park where playing tennis? We sign it for three hours, we could certainly sign this for a three hour visit or less, you know, depending, because it, it depends upon how you, how you feel your, you know, what you would be.
Using it for?
Yeah, in, in the end, the pull the plan up so you can see it. Yeah, this is the plan overall for for what's being done. Yeah. So. So what you have basically is you're starting off, here's Park Street coming in onto Old Stanford Road. Okay, so right where the sidewalk ends at present, we'll be coming around with a concrete sidewalk. There should be a grass shelf all the way along it to the point where come closer to the park, then once we get to the park itself, then looking at this is the entrance into the park right here, where the, where vehicular access is and the pedestrian gate next to it. Then right here is where this pull off is, so we've got one accessible parking space and four other parking spaces associated with it, with a sidewalk behind it. And the thought is from here, if we were to extend the sidewalk, we could extend it off of this piece and go further to the further around towards Gower Road. That's on your design at present and still needs a lot more approvals.
A question with the, the access gate from Old Stanford Road, can that, right now it's a lock and key that's never locked?
It can be locked.
Can it, can it be changed for like a combination, so?
Well.
More people?
Well, the, they shouldn't have to be able to drive in.
Right.
Put that way, right?
But if land trust is going in there.
We can certainly lock to lock, we're not going to do a combination, our, everything that we have is keyed.
Okay.
For our parks guys, we have one key, right, so we could lock to lock to land trust for whatever reason needs to get in there, but I'd rather stay away from a combination.
Okay.
Combinations can be given out.
Could they be given access to a key?
We can, well, we can lock to lock, right?
Right.
They can have their own lock associated and we can have our locks, if we give them a key to our locks and they can get it anywhere.
Oh, okay, so they're for all the locks?
Usually in that situation, you call your lock to lock, right, so if we open up our lock, we can get in, they open up their lock, they can get in, right?
Oh, okay, so they could still.
Do a lock to lock.
Oh, okay.
They have their own lock, we have our own, and then it happens in various places where, you know, you know, it's three or four people, we need access, exact same thing.
Oh, okay.
Everyone puts their own lock on it, you got your own key, you're all, they could put a combination on their side if they wanted to, I'd rather do a key, but ours, ours is a key.
It's just that I know that in past there's people been go, going and dumping and I, I drove in myself when I was planting.
Guys about making sure it's locked.
Yeah.
You know, and then, and then go from there, I think it's just, you know, we haven't seen that, I haven't heard of that, so.
Well, we had a few plants stolen from the Cam Hutchins Garden.
You don't need a truck for that.
Yeah, but I wonder if that was.
You just need a pocket.
No, no, these were good sized perennials, so Todd and I walked in and it wasn't an animal, it was too clean and they were gone. So that was my only, only thing on that. Next is the cameras in the park, there were cameras in Bristo for a little while.
He still had cameras in Bristo, we just have them in different locations than when, than where they're than where the people are going, right?
Okay.
The, you know, Nicole can speak to a little bit more, but they're, they know exactly where the cameras are. Everywhere, so wherever they're tagging is not where we have camera, so.
Okay.
Our IT department, I spoke to our T depart, our, our IT department yesterday, he has five more cameras that he can put up, they're wireless cameras, right, so they have to, they have to broadcast pictures back or video back. We've got five new ones that we can put in, five in our possession that we can put up that are solar powered. So all they need is sun, a little bit of sun, then we can place them, I, I spoke to John Howe this morning and we're just going to come forward with the areas where we think, you know, we should put them. You know, we have, we have issues with vandalism elsewhere too, in, in other parks too, so we had somebody kicking the door in the wave any bathrooms the other day, so we got a problem, excuse me there too, so the problem is it's not, we're not going to be able to blanket it.
Yeah.
We'll be, be honest, we're just not going to be able to, but we can try to make it so that we can see them a little bit better. So as they're walking in and out, you might be able to then notice somebody coming in and out, you know, not going to hit every area, but we can try to do as I have to, just sit with John and Todd and Ryan and Chris Kaiser and then probably Moses as well. And it's okay, where do we want to focus these other five that we have, and then if we've got to purchase more for other parks, we will.
Okay.
It's very frustrating. We, we're still trying to figure out a game plan to fix it, to remedy it, the, it's an inaccessible area for us, I can't get a truck to it, so I can't get a pressure washer to it.
Yeah.
You know, I can't get, I can't get water up to it, I can't. So we're looking at the fact that we might have to take the, one of the thoughts is to take the boardwalk out and replace it with boards or turn the boards over, right? Lot of work involved in that, you know, to do that, but we can, you know, that's, that's one thought. Or to try to pressure wash it or to scrub it out, right, and take graffiti remover. The patio is a little bit more problematic because you can't take that patio out. We flipped those steps, steps before and that was easy because you could just flip the granite around and call it a day. I can't do that here because the pattern doesn't work, if you will, right, just, and it's all, you know, it's all cemented in, so we're thinking of trying to possibly partner with the slobs, that was a, that was a thought this morning was to have the slobs come out because then it's the youth fixing what the youth did, you know?
Right.
I mean, Nicole can speak to it, but, you know, and then maybe get a little peer pressure on and say, I had to go clean up your mess because it's probably certain that they know who it is, right, somebody in the circle knows who the other person is, right? Well, if we ask the slobs to come up and they come up and we give them graffiti remover and scrub brushes and they clean the patio and clean the bench. The bench weighs like 300 pounds, right, so to try to move it and get it out of there, it's not worth it at that point, so if we can get the, if we can partner with them, possibly get some help from them, maybe that'll apply some peer pressure back to, you know, to then allow, you know, to then get this to stop. Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, everyone's aware of it, you know, and Mike is actually writing. Oh, absolutely, that's a whole other aspect, right, and according to New Canaanite this morning, I think Mike Dynan is going to write about it tomorrow.
Right.
In his blog, in his paper, the, so he's a so he's going to write about it, which is a good thing because that'll bring out a little bit more thought on it, a little bit more, you know, so people are aware of it, people are aware, but they're not totally aware, they don't know who it is, they thought it was.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure like other teenage kids aren't reading the news and stuff like the, everyone else in the New Canaan mom and stuff. So my thinking is also, I'm talking with Officer Deek at the high school, I'm going to try to get the police club involved and then present to them the photos of the graffiti and have like a gift card on the line or something like.
Right.
Help us solve this, you know what I mean, like here's your first investigation.
For those unaware, Officer, she, she's the one that is.
Yeah, it's my case, so I, this is my mess. So I'm just like, if it's young eyes and they might have seen this person with this nickname of whatever they tagged or in the bathroom, maybe they'll pass it to the friend and like for every one person that you share with, that's for other people that they're, they share with, right? Like what they say for social media and all that, so that's the next step of what I want, would like to do. I haven't, I brainstormed that when I was trying to sleep last night, that didn't work, so then I didn't put it into, into action yet. So that's that, and then, you know, there's just multiple locations in, in town where this graffiti is happening with, from the same individuals.
So.
And there's no cameras wherever they're doing it, you know?
Is it a case where, and if people, by the way, if people should find graffiti, they should contact you or the police?
Point of contact, which has been pretty good, Robin's been forwarding me things and I've been getting other emails from individuals. Because I don't have the Facebook moms, you know?
I'm a member of that and there is a lot of outrage around this graffiti. Yeah, and I don't know if there's a way to get a post on there, the fact that you're investigating it and.
I mean, if anyone else who's on it wanted to mention that, that's fine too, because.
I went touch with the administrator.
Because Mike Dynan's article had me in as investigating officer, so.
I made a comment and wanted, it gave the information that like 27 people.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so I think it's just, you know, it's out of mind, out of sight though, like people will be like, oh yeah, and then the next time they see it, rather than just put in the void to actually contact the police.
Yeah, right.
Because it's not just happening here, it's like, there's like a half a dozen other locations.
Yeah, Land Trust, the Green Lake, Dunkin Donuts.
Yeah, so they're, you know, and they're aware of where the camps are.
Officer Nicole Vartuli. V as in Victor, A R T as in Tango, U L I.
Is it a situation like other towns have ordinances? I mean, this is probably not for Conservation Commission, but other towns have ordinances where if you're under 18 or, I think New York and California, you have to be 18 to buy spray paint, would that help a New Canaan if they're not driving yet?
I don't know, I mean, I always thought that there's the sense of the young kids are going to huff the, the spray paint cans, right? So that's where actually, when I went to Wheat and Dairy, I was surprised that they weren't locked up and that they don't ID for anyone under whatever age, 21 or whatnot.
You don't have to by Connecticut state law.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think Walmart has some things locked up, but it, I think it's per business. It's, my sergeant asked if I can approach them and see if they're willing to ID or lock them up for different reasons, so I'm, I'm going to approach that also.
You have contact information that you're putting out for like a number or an email?
Yeah, I have a, a work cell phone, it's 203 989 6050. And then my email is Nicole, N I C O L E dot Vartuli at newcananct.gov.
Thank you. So is there any, like, so now I'm back to you Tiger on this, the, the cleanup, is this? Is this gonna come out of the, the Bristow lines, line and budget, how does that work?
I haven't gone that far.
Okay.
We have to see exactly what it would entail, whether it's just gonna be staff time or if there's materials associated with it. The problem that we have is we have a twenty five thousand dollar deductible for the town and each incident is its own incident, right? So the kicking the door, waving it, that's a, it's own incident, right, you tag here is your own incident, we're not gonna trip that. If I was to remove the entire patio, put it back in again, or move the boardwalk, put it back in again, I might get close, but that's almost wasting money at that point in time.
Yeah.
So we have to determine how we're gonna handle it, and then at that point, determine what budget's gonna come out of. I really wanna take it out of the Bristow maintenance budget for graffiti that happened at Bristow, you know, I.
Yeah.
That's fair, but we'll see, we're getting closer to the end of the year and, you know, our available money is dwindling, so we'll see how, how that goes. I mainly wanted to see if I could get, you know, if I could get people to help, then I'm buying scrub brushes and graffiti remover, that's not a lot of money, right?
Right.
And then, uh, I might be able to get some people to help turn the boards over, if you will, you know. Can't use power tools in the parks without permission, but, you know, we might be able to figure something out as well, you know.
Um, for my report, does anyone have an estimate of the value of damage that that has caused?
Not at present, uh, we'll get one for you though.
Yeah, all right, that's fine.
Or do you put an expensive fix in until you find culprit though, cause ruin.
Well, they did it, or it's the second time, right, it's the same tag, so the, uh, you know, but yeah, the first one, we were able to take care of it minimal cost. Um.
The one on Weed Street?
No, we actually damaged Bristow before.
Oh.
We had, we had a couple of things, we had kids riding their bikes through there, and then it started a small fire, like campfire or whatever. Found those kids, they did some repairs, they did some work.
Oh, you did find the kid who did the fire?
Yeah.
Chris was on mission.
Right, Chris found him, and then, uh, and then the tag one, we didn't find, but we were able to just turn the stone over and call it a day at that point in time, that wasn't a problem. And I only, I don't even know, I don't even think Peter charged us to do the work, I think he just did it because he was, you know, he didn't wanna see it. Um, but, uh, this one's, to your point, it's a little bit more extensive, it's a big tag, you know, on the boardwalk specifically, so.
Yeah.
Is it a, uh, is it a, um, shareable tag, I mean, could you take a picture of it and put it somewhere?
Yes.
It doesn't have anything that's, you know, of, of, you know, provocative or anything, it's just.
No, no, I'm not thinking that, I'm thinking to your point about, and, and, and Annie's point about the. Um, public effort to either stop or at least slow down this. If this picture were just, a picture of the tag were just posted somewhere, maybe at the high school, this is a problem.
So that's what I'm, my goal is to try to get it in the hands of the high school students, maybe, I don't know about Saks, cause. Apparently like the witness said that the kids could have been fourteen or fifteen years old, I mean, fourteen is like the start of high school, right? But then you could also have Country Day School, you know.
Right.
Um.
Well, they also have friends and very frequently the friends are much younger.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I'll, I'll, uh, try to see if I can get it into Saks too, but then you don't wanna also do the opposite effect of. Kids seeing and like, I can beat that one or whatever, you know, um.
A Darian.
It's, it's.
My tag is better than your tag.
Better than your tag. Topic sometimes. But I think getting it into the high school will really help out a lot, so I'm working on that.
If it were a way to be communicated, however that's done, whether it's the, a message or whatever, but this isn't, this is. I'd sort of like to take the word enforcement out of it, this is your park. And it belongs just to you and your family and your friends, so let's all get together and take better care of it, I don't know, to. Stimulate some sympathy for the situation.
Right, for sure, yeah.
That's it, if you haven't seen, that's.
Uh, if you do find out who did it, is there, um.
Oh, well, that's easy to photograph.
Handle it, just trying if it's.
There was a, was there.
Honestly, I don't know yet, like, it's one of those cross the bridge when you get there kind of thing, because we don't know what the damage costs. And there's multiple places in town, including private organizations that they damaged.
I mean, it's a town car.
Depends the age of the individual, is it a, is it adult, is it a juvenile, you know, um, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle it.
People are happy, actually.
About it, keeps the cats out.
Just trying to get leads right now, hopefully.
So, um. So here's a question, Ed, not once again for this commission, but it's because it's regarding Bristow, if there was someone that was caught, would they, would the town seek? Reimbursement from them?
In the past.
You have in the past, okay.
Yeah, we had damage at Kiwanis, they were able to find the individual, so, said, you know, uh, make restitution.
Right.
There'll be no charges filed, so they'll make restitution, they, they were doing donuts in the grass. So they make, uh, they make restitution on what we feel the repair would be, and then there would, there was no, uh, there was no charges filed. That's good and bad, you know.
Yeah.
Cause, yeah, they were able to just pay a check and get off on it. There are members of our organization think that we should make an example of someone, it's a very difficult decision, we might do that more to the police department, but. Normally, we just want restitution, you know, we want them to fix it, and, and then, you know, and then please don't do it again, so if you will.
Yeah, alright, alright, so that's, any questions on Bristow, thank you, Nicole.
No, I have to run now.
Yeah, no, no, worked out, thank you. Um, next, Conservation Commission Communications, um, and I saw that the, the newsletter, the town, took. The town newsletter, how often does it go out?
Once a month.
It is once a month, okay.
To anybody to put anything on.
I looked for it, I couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it either.
Came out this morning.
Oh.
Email.
But I didn't find the old one.
Oh, it was in an email?
Yeah.
Did you get an email last time or no?
No, no, I haven't gotten any either, and I did sign up for it.
I got any, emails from the, you know, first selectmen.
I got at this point, and then it even asks you, you know, to reply that you received it, or just, you know, little checkmark.
But for the newsletter, it says that in that particular email from Deanna?
Yeah, so that's the newsletter.
That's the newsletter.
That's the newsletter.
If, if you got an email from the first selectman.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Then there's a link to the news, oh.
Should just be.
It just scrolls down, like she was talking about the budget that just passed the meeting, then there's something about the parks department.
Okay.
Yeah, just continue to scroll, we got pedestrian safety in there, we had some, so, and it's open to pretty much any department that wants to. Or commission that wants to put something in for content, you know, we'll, from the TPW standpoint, we will look to post something every month, right? Cause there's a lot that we can post, but others can certainly put in something, you know, you just, uh, work with Deanna and Greg and Tucker. Free Greg Riley.
So it has to be approved by.
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a committee that reviews it.
So Ann was.
How do we submit to the committee?
You would, uh, talk to Tucker and Greg, say you wanna get on the next with Greg Riley, he's our communications and grant writer.
Okay.
He's a Greg dot Riley, R E I L O Y, at New Canaan C T dot G O V.
And when does the commission meet, every week or once?
We, well, we have a, we have a weekly communications meeting, and then the newsletter was out once a month, it's Monday morning at eleven, yes.
Okay, um, and so if you wanna do a submission, would we just email?
Reach out to Greg and Tucker and say you wanna submit, and this is what you wanna submit, and then they'll ask for the content, pictures, if you have them. And then, uh, then it gets BJ flag, helps them format it all, it, you know, I don't think, I think that they're looking for content, so.
Okay.
Say that.
If we want to post something that's not in line with the, um, monthly publication dates of the newsletter. Are you also, um, considering for other cha- channels like the Instagram or?
Right, so yeah, the communications group meets and we, we discuss what's gonna be on the town website. And then what's social media worthy, you know, sometimes they're both, or sometimes they're just social media, and then, so that's Facebook, Instagram, you know, X. Um, what are the, you know, and then post there, so, and then that gets kinda, um, vetted through there as well, stuff of what, whatever. Whatever you're looking to post.
Okay.
Yeah, um, but yeah, that's, that's, we meet every Monday morning at eleven, so if there's things that you want on the website, we're always looking to, you know, there's five items or six items. Be on the website, six news items, so we're looking for content each time to try to roll off older items and bring on new, so.
Okay, great, I created a document that I am gonna share with everyone on the Conservation Commission, um, for like, um. Planning advanced posts and with room for edits and feedbacks, feedback from everyone, so I'll share that.
I don't think technically we can do that.
Oh.
Cause of FOIA issues.
A close one, I don't know if it's a, you know.
We can't.
Why if it went out as an agenda item?
Yeah, it, it would, you, you need to bring it on the agenda, it's, do you mind asking about that, or I can ask Tucker, it's.
Yeah, that's, it's, that's an interesting one, cause you're just really talking about content, you know.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a, an item per se, you know.
This is preparing something to share with public.
No, I know, I know, I just, I think we just need to get the approval from, cause the commission can't get, cause it'd be considered, it could be considered a meeting if you're on a Google Doc. And, and putting information back and forth, um.
So we would have to do it, we would have to do it in one of our meeting serves.
Yeah, so it, it would, it would come to present and then becomes a problem because our meeting is the second Tuesday.
Yeah.
But, and then we've kind of already missed, so it might just be something where we can just find out, was that Tucker who would get that?
Yeah, I'll ask her about that, about, you know, how you're, you're formulating your, that's a tough one, cause you don't wanna have a meeting and then have, you know. Have subsequent meetings just to talk about the new, you know, what you wanna post, there, there's no harm in Ann sending it to everybody. No harm in that, there's no harm in anyone sending.
It's once you get the editing.
Cannot go back and forth.
Yeah.
I mean, it like sounded specific agenda items, right, so if you were to have, like, you know, so let's say gas leak blowers, right, they've been an issue, you know, issue before. If you put it in, if, if you send something to the commission on an email, and then everyone starts to opine on the email. That's a meeting, you can't do that, cause that's something you'll have as an agenda item, this is a little bit, is a little bit grayer, so I'll ask the question, she can certainly send it. You can certainly send something on glass sleep blows, you just can't then comment about it back and forth, other than a thank you that I received it, if you will, right? Cause then that's constituted as a meeting, so let's see what, um.
Are your Monday morning meetings public?
Yeah, uh, no, they're not public, they're, uh, it's a, just for town staff, but, you know, I, I would imagine you'd be. Welcome as a commission member, they're not open to the public, they're, they're considered a staff meeting.
Okay, so, um, maybe that could be a place where we can have some back and forth about a post, that might be.
Yeah.
Um, open debate, like a, a gas leaf blower post, we wanna make sure that that's, um, crafted. Exactly the way.
Right, I'm sorry, I know, I know it's, I know it's annoying, and I know it's frustrating, but it's just like, yeah. Cause they'll, they'll, they might, they might be, yeah, just gonna.
But if you're, if you're looking at an agenda item, let's say, Ann is wanting to prepare sort of an outline of. How we would develop this, this, um, content product, and she's looking for. Um, discussion items, and it was framed as agenda item number four, and you, you, you attached the copy like you would minutes or something else. Is that not possible?
That's possible, you're not commenting.
No, what, we would come prepared to comment.
Absolutely, that's something prior to the meeting that you're getting for information to come back with. You're just, you're not opining back saying, oh, Ann, we should put this, this and this on it, you wait to the meeting to say, Ann, we should put this, this and this.
Well, that would be helpful, I think just having that.
I'll share it without edit access, I'll give you.
Yeah, and then at the meetings, we can then.
And then we can develop how you wanna develop it, so you walk away with a product, you don't waste the two months getting.
You don't have to see it for the first time as you're stepping foot into the meeting, you can see, is, we call it, that's backup information, right, to the agenda item that you're gonna have, right? So that's, that's, that happens all the time, and that, that's fine, that's no problem at all, you know.
Okay, so you'll, and you'll get in touch with Tucker.
I'll ask her that question about whether you can develop that document behind the scenes to then come forward with a vote. If you will, right, cause it would be a vote, at that point, you, you would have to do it here to say, yes, we wanna put this forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that would probably be bust.
Yes, everything that goes in would have to be voted on, the Conservation Commission for it goes through.
You're, you're a little different of an entity than the majority, the majority are, you know, commissions are dealing with items that are coming to them and they're voting and it's moving forward.
Yeah.
You're not, you're, you know, you're initiative based versus.
We're, we're raising the issues.
Yeah, exactly, it's a little bit different, you know, even the Utilities Commission is a little, is, is not even close where you are, they're closer to a commission. In the regard where issues are brought to them, they solve the issue, talk about it, you know, vote in the forward.
Okay, we'll work with that.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll get in touch with, with, uh, Tucker or you want?
Yeah, it's fine, for, to be, to come to the meeting, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, talk to Tucker or Pam.
Great.
Um, they kind of put that together.
Great, I'd love to start, uh, attending those meetings.
Yeah, they're Zoom capable too, so.
Great.
Oh, you don't have to, uh, in that regard, you can just ask to, to attend, you know, via Zoom, you don't have to be in the room, you don't have to, like, make a trip.
And things like the, the list of the hazardous waste days, cause they're, Westport's starting up in what, two weeks or something, and shred days that.
We post, we post that.
You'll post that, yeah.
Yeah, and then that, that's like, that's a communication item that would go out, right, so not only do we post it on our, so. You know, I, I put it on Instagram and Twitter, right, X, you know, on our accounts. Town posted as well, and we put it on the website also, right, and then it goes on the, on the transfer station website, so it goes on the, one of the items, you know. Uh, one of our, say, news items, if you will, and then it gets, and then associated with Deanna's newsletter, there's. We're asking everyone to sign up for alerts from the town, and you can sign up for whatever alert. That you're interested in, all of them, or if you're interested in what's happening with the TPW as far as road closures, things of that nature. There's, the health department has their own, you know, say, sub database of people who wanted to know about things that are from a health na- nature. Um, we've got other ones associated from a emergency services standpoint, things of that nature, and then obviously you sign up for your global. Hurricane notice, you know, what have you, all the, all the larger ones, but you can sign up for the sub ones whereby if you wanna know about road closures or. Think, or the transfer station opening hours and hazardous wastes and shred day, you sign up for that, and then I, I post. On Everbridge, and you get that specific, it doesn't go town wide, it only goes to the specific readership that wants those. At present, so those are, yes, you're opting in, so if you, on that newsletter, there's a place to click in. And then you can opt into the newsletter, opt into those portions of Everbridge on, on, on the alcohol basis. And you'll, for us, on these subcategories, you only get an email or a text message, you don't get a phone call, phone calls are strictly, um. Emergency based.
Right.
You know, so, you know, tornado, you know, high winds, hurricane, heavy rain, snow.
Which is exactly when your phone doesn't work.
Well, yes, but that's a different story, that's the Utilities Commission, they're working on that.
Alright.
Worth, would it be worth coordinating with the, the coalition, uh, the library coalition?
The environmental, yes.
If they have things, yeah, then it, that would probably be either brought through myself or for, or the, the Conservation Commission, right? Either to get that, you know, I was bringing data back from them before, right, you know, to try to work with on the P O C D, but if there's other initiatives that they have. Likely, they're probably the better bet, bet is to come through the Conservation Commission and then come into the town. Um, depending upon what it is, you know, it's like.
We could put a call for submissions from the other groups that are like that.
Right.
I mean, Plant New Canaan sometimes goes directly to Tiger.
I'm sorry?
Plant New Canaan like sometimes goes directly to Tiger, but yeah, in, in the.
And then you have your own.
The only, right.
Yeah, but we'll do like, um, we'll, um, like, I have stuff for you right now. Like, um, but that's, um, shred day and the waste hazardous waste schedule.
Right, these are more, that's more of a town initiative that's planning to can itself is with, um, you know.
Yeah, that's just, that's not what Ann would be doing, it's, it's just information with DPW, yeah. So we've already created the Instagram, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be able to post like cider date for the nature center, we, we can't do that, we don't do that, so we don't go to that level, everything is town based, anything that's. Town governmental based, right? Um, if they wanna post something on that, they can, they, they obviously have their own social media to take care of it, so we can't do those types of initiatives. But if there was a larger initiative, like the Jeff Speck one was a little bit, you know, like it's a little more interesting on that, you know, as far as, you know, where that should be housed. Um, but yeah, we can't, like I said, we can't do individual ones that would promote something at the nature center or something at Grace Farms, they have their own ways to do that. But if there's a, something that the Environmental Coalition is working on together, since you're a member, we're a member, I think that that would probably fit. If you will.
That's good, great, awesome, thank you, um. And, um, just because I'm personally obsessed with all things transfer station, just the, um, hazardous waste isn't updated yet on the website.
Okay.
Cause I've got, it's, it's updated for, um. And I've, I've got the lit, anyways, um, next, um. Sustainable, uh.
Sustainable.
Send me, in the update, I'm still waiting to hear back from some people, I've reached out to, if they still wanna be on it or not, Deanna was fine with, uh, the list of people who are on, be on it. So hopefully we'll start that up again next month, um, I just need to get the okay that some people who were on it last time are no longer. Still wanna be on it, uh, so that's it there, um, and you were at the Environmental Coalition, correct?
I was.
Do you wanna give an update of?
Sure.
The meeting?
There was a presentation from a resident named Rick Corkin, um, I think you were there as well.
I was.
His, um, plan was about burying wires, electrical wires throughout town. And it was an interesting plan because he wants to start fundraising campaign so that this would be, uh, you know, I mean, it's an, it's an ambitious plan to bury all the wires, expensive, um, but he thinks there, um, that it's a good idea for the town because of, um, you know, resiliency and storm, you know, wires down and the ex, the expense of cleaning up, you know, those power outages. Uh, so I think it's interesting for the conservation commission because um, it could be coordinated with some of our other initiatives, like making the town more walkable and adding bike lanes. And so, um, after the meeting, Leo Carl asked if, uh, Rick could come do his presentation for this commission. If you're interested, um, I can.
We, we, yeah, we could put them, it's on the, on next month's agenda, is that, is he the person that, that on his street?
Yes.
The neighbors came together and buried the wires?
Yeah.
Neighbors.
Oh, three neighbors, so small street.
Was, no, he's on Douglas Road, but three of the neighbors, him and two of his neighbors did, so they did three houses on Douglas.
Okay.
A sort of test case, so they buried the wires in front of their properties. Uh, he spoke to the utilities commission already, he spoke to the board of finance, I believe he spoke to the town council. So, yeah, it would be a, a good thing for him to come in.
Okay.
It's a million dollars, isn't it, what he's, what he talked about and, and a long range.
Effectively, yes, it's a lot of money, um, in that regard, um. As far as, you know, we were quoted things from ever source at a million dollars a mile to bury everything and, you know, to go forward. So, yeah, the, uh, but his feeling also is, he's, he's taking it twofold, right? So he's got a resiliency point of view, and then he's got, you know, a money side, right? Whereby the money that you don't pack into restoration, since you're already underground, you put it underground first, so you don't have to worry about restoring it later. Um, and then the resiliency part is fact that if he can get the backbone, talked about backbone trimming, right? So the backbone, you can see the backbone wires that they have, you get the backbone underground, that then, if that doesn't go out, you know, a lot of people are affected when that goes out, that doesn't go out, then people are affected maybe in their neighborhood, right? So frees up crews that were going to be coming in to take care of larger outages, to then go to shore garages, right? His thought is that instead of for the, the townspeople to be out ten days without power, the goal is to have them out four to five days without power. You're never going to be able to get out of it, right? You're never gonna exhaust yourself of it, because even underground can have problems.
Right.
But you can then shorten down that, and then shorten down that effort, if you will, to then.
There has to be a lot of, sort of, mapping of where.
Well. They, well, they know exactly where their circuits are, they know everything is, and then they're putting together what's called a heat map for us, for where they're seeing the most outages, right? The most occurrences, and, um, that's actually an ever evolving heat map, I would say, because as they continue with their tree trimming um, initiatives, our heat map is changing, right? And it's changing to the good or to the better, we're not seeing as much as we were before.
Yeah.
You know, we had a storm last night, this morning, what, we still only had like seventeen people out on two separate outages, say, the road dabbing, very minimal compared to what we used to see in the, in the past, what we would have had after, uh, after windstorm like that, with saturated ground.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it's a, it's a worthy prospect, it is expensive, it's a worthy prospect, though, and he's, like you said, he's trying to attack it from a standpoint of, let's do the, the major feeders, right, your arterial, so to speak. And then that will have a residual effect later, you might not be able to get to everybody, right? You're not be able to get down a cul-de-sac, because there's not the bag for the buck on the cul-de-sac.
This is long range plan.
Right, right, but that's the overall thought, but it would be, you know.
So we should, could you reach out to him and see if he would come to the next, and then Tiger, then we'll be prepared to talk about it. So, so you can give us how and everything, and it must be a safety issue too, right?
Just some of it is, I mean, down wires are a problem, you know, they, they always cause, you know, the possible fire, you know, possible.
I was walking on Park Street fourteen years ago, and my dog started running, and I've heard this weird noise, and one of the wires split luckily on the other side of the street.
Wow.
But it was like pixie dust, like zapping all over me, like, yeah, no, yeah, but like, never even thought. Luckily, the poles are on the other side of the, where the sidewalk is, so.
Right, so you're on the opposite side, which is a good thing, yeah, now it's interesting, your dog saw it come.
Is, is, is there in this discussion, I'm just curious, because I was involved with the relocation of Water Street in Norwalk, where they buried all the wire when they raised the road, and the biggest problem was the various different entities that needed to go under. Um, not the cable, the, yeah, the fiber optics in them, and, um, they wouldn't go together.
No, they won't.
No, they won't go together, so you have to do two installations, sometimes three, depending on where they are, and they all have customers in the area. It's, it's a nightmare.
We had it done, and, and we had cable and electric in the same.
Same trench or same conduit?
The same trench.
Yeah, have them in the same trench, can't have them in the same condo, because the electric will play off of the, off of, uh,
I see.
Off your communications, so there has to be a certain distance.
So, no, we had to.
Certain distance separation, that's the, that's, you know, you have to, they're gonna want to be in their own conduit, they gotta be separated, and sometimes they need to be separated vertically and horizontally, right? Most of the time, it's just horizontal, they want a separation distance, because there's feedback from the electrical line, which will then affect your communication line, that's why you don't run them together, uh.
But it was, it was hugely expensive for, because it was so complicated.
Right.
Took a lot of back and forth, and the other issue was, is the power company, which at that time was primarily South Norwalk Electric. They don't particularly like their wires underground, because they can't find the, the, the problem. And if it's underground, they have to, they have to start digging like test pits and blah, blah, and blah, it's not, it's not so simple. Um, so I think these are considerations when you think about this as a sort of a one-sided approach to a problem.
Right.
The problem comes with other problems.
Oh, yeah, but at the same time, it, it is exciting to think that, um, you, we would have an opportunity to add features to the streets that would improve the town in terms of conservation, walkability, bikability, water flow, bio swales, I mean, slowing down traffic, it, there's a, a lot of.
It's tricky, we just had a, a small area, maybe, I don't know, maybe like thirty feet. Just to get, I'm sure they'll get better at this, but getting ever source to come out, they sent out six trucks, and and they had to come out multiple times, and you know, they, it's like they hadn't done it before, so many. So it would be, it's a, it's a tricky thing to get them up to speed on how to do it on a larger scale basis.
Yeah, that's, you know, to your point, that the underground ones, when there's a power outage, the underground ones are brought back last. It's easier to string the wire, it's easier to see a fuse.
Yeah, you know exactly where it goes down, I'm nervous now, when it goes to where my.
Anyone underground is brought back last or in restoration.
I also have a lot of craters that, you know, like to, like to burrow in my ground.
I tend to like it, you know, as well, but there, there's like, like any initiative, there's, there are good aspects of it, and there, there are not so good aspects about it, have to go in with eyes wide open as to what it might be.
Right.
All right, so Anne, reach out to him.
Do we have a date for our next meeting? So, you know, you have to have somebody come in to determine how the waters can flow after they dig the trenches, and be sure they backfill it. I mean, there was all these issues that I had to deal with.
I agree with it.
Second or the ninth.
It should, it's the ninth, it's May ninth, twelve P M, yeah, so bring him in, then we can discuss that. Okay, so thank you on that, next, um.
What would that, I just had one other question, what would that, how would that affect the, um, photocells now that everybody's installing on their roofs?
For, oh, for that, I don't think it would have any effect, to be honest with you.
Have to go fit feed into ever source.
The feeds coming in underground instead of overhead, I don't think it's gonna have any effect, to be honest with you.
Except expense.
The expense to get to each house, yeah, that's what's, that's the driving cause, right? One is the, the aspect of putting it inside the road or on the shoulder, what have you, and then is to feed each individual home at that point in time. Because, you know, to your point, you're digging through your front lawn, which is probably your, you know, where all your landscaping is, where all, where all the improvements are in your house. It's, it gets, it could be prohibitive, but it's, 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 it's worthy of, of.
Sure.
Investigating, put it that way.
Yeah, but it was more about the water.
Point that you brought up, or, or a new tiger to take in sort of the main, the main, I'm not sure what they're called, but they're the main feeders for the side ones. I know one goes up Owen Oak Ridge, I happen to know that because I'm very fortunate to be on it.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure where all the others go, but I do think they go up main roads.
Absolutely.
And so if you took that as this, as a, as a section first, and say, okay, is this gonna work out?
That's his thought, his thought is South Avenue or Owen Oak Ridge, right? So, um, for those two reasons, one, they're gateways into town, and two, they're primary feeders, right? So at that point in time, um, another one you could look at is Lakeview, because everything comes out of the substation, right? Seven or eight circuits in town, everything comes out of the substation, so there, if you have a problem, you want to make sure that that's all taken care of, but he's, he's, he's on the right side of it, it's just a question of that getting traction. He's, um, the town's gonna provide some monies for him to start a, uh, the process, twenty-five thousand dollars to start the process and try to put in a, um, a, a look as to where, where, where best, where the, to best attack.
Is this something that ever source might be interested in supporting or no?
They are to a degree, ever source came and spoke to the commission, the utilities commission last month, month before, and, uh, they they have their, they have their, you know, they have their plus side and their minus side, right? They got their concerns, and then some other parts where they say, oh, it's, you know, it's a worthy initiative for some aspects of their operations, and then for other aspects, not, not so, right? You know, the fact of trying to find it after, not so, trying to then, you know, being on the preventive side, and then on the proactive side as far as, uh, restoration and the cost thereof, you know, to restore power, uh, yeah, very much so. So it's really, to them, they're, they're, they're a willing partner, but they're, they're not gonna lead. They're, they're definitely not gonna lead, the town would have to lead.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put this on the agenda, and if you just let me know if he, he can come, we'll definitely put on there, we can discuss. Um, pollinator pathway update, just at the group, um, the pollinator pathways having a program landscaping for beauty and resilience with, um, it's on May nineteenth, which is a Sunday at three o'clock. And it's with, uh, Gray, right, uh, oh, sorry, Pennington Gray.
Right.
Pennington Gray, so he'll be on that, and then the pollinator pathway group, uh, purchased an oak tree from Copia at cost, um, and DPW is gonna be putting it in possibly next week.
On the next week, yeah, we're trying to get through this week with the weather, it's gonna be about next week.
Where does it go?
It's gonna, uh, in Bristow, inside Bristow proper, um, or on, on the right-hand side of the path, almost in line with the, the, the oak at present, so if you kind of like, look at the oak and then look behind it, right there, there's like, there's an area that's kind of just open behind the fence line, uh, right there, I think was the, what, I think Chris sticked that out, right?
Yeah.
If you install it, does that void out their, um, guarantee?
I don't think so.
As, it's, it's copia, they, they, I mean, they're giving us, they're giving a cost.
No, no, I understand that, but normally a, a tree of any size, even, even the smaller trees come with a year or two years, or sometimes even longer if they're bigger, but if they don't install it, the guaranteed is not, is not in place.
We haven't addressed that with it.
Yeah, we probably don't have a guarantee.
Ask, we planted other things for them, we've never had an issue, so.
Well, I mean, if there's no issue, you wouldn't know if the guarantee was there or not, um, I'm just asking.
No, we haven't, we haven't addressed that, we can certainly ask him the question, I'm not, I'm not overly concerned, you know, like, so we do a, a lot of work with copia.
That's fine.
The tree, you know, and I, and our guys have planted it every tree in town pretty much, and we've had very good success on, you know, their survival rate.
You know how to plant a tree, in other words.
Yeah, our guys do a good job.
All the things that Waveney that were planted are alive, right?
Yes, yeah, we haven't, well, yeah, knock on wood, we haven't seen anything, you know, to that regard, to say, oh, you know, we, we, uh, we shouldn't be in the tree planting business, our guys do a very nice job.
Can we do something where it's wrapped like at Waveney for the deer?
Deer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put a deer guard on it.
Right.
Um, yeah, we're. There, we're trying to keep the deer out, but yeah, we'll see, you know.
I know they're supposed to be kept out, but.
You only need one to get in, and it's goodbye.
It's true, yeah, to that end, we did put in some additional height to the fencing along the railroad track. Uh, Gannon put it in, it was basically three wires at the top to try to give ourselves another couple of feet on it. Don't know whether or not that's gonna work, you know, we'll have to see, proof will be in the pudding.
What about the gates into Bristow? Because there's no.
Yeah, we're working on closures, it's just in my head too, I was like, well, I was, I was going to say, but it doesn't really matter when we leave the gate.
They'll still find the open gate, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Every time I drive past Bristow on one oh six, that gate's a jar, you know? Yeah, I grew up on a farm, it was always you open and get your closing gate, it was, uh, not even a question, um, but, uh, but, yeah, we'll, we'll look, we're looking at a closure system to try to make sure that it will then stay shut.
So, people just have.
The tree is, does that have symbolic value, like, is it a replacement for the tree that went down?
Uh, in essence, yeah, you know, we're, we're not.
There be a post about that, um.
It can be, yeah, because it's a town initiative, it's a town, it's a joint initiative.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there'll be plaques, because a number of organizations contributed.
Yeah, it's, it's twelve organizations.
Social media.
Sort of making a thing out of it.
Absolutely, when it comes down to, we, we will post that, you know, that'll, that's, that's not necessarily website worthy, you know, for us as a news item, but it is, it is social media worthy, right? So Facebook, Instagram, so yeah, at the time that it's put in, we'll take pictures of it, get a picture of everybody, and then post it.
And the old, and the picture of the old oak.
Yeah, Chris Schiffer requested that we do the dedication right before September eighth.
That's fine.
That's fine, um. Because, yeah, because all the groups are gonna want to come in and have a rep from their picture, take a, stuff like that. Um, okay, uh, recycling food scraps swap shop update, um, mostly just recycling tipping fees. When I was at Stanford, they said they're increasing, are they increasing for New Canaan?
Tipping fees?
Yeah, for recycling.
We don't know yet.
Oh, you don't do it yet.
Are, we are, so our, our tipping fees for our municipal solid waste, we went out to bid, um, and we started a new contract January one, and our hauling fees, if you will, changed from ninety-five dollars a ton to a hundred and eleven dollars a ton. So there's a market change there, but we were in a very good, we had two series of five-year contracts, and we were in a very good position relative to our surrounding neighbors for a very long period of time, for about ten years, we were in a very good position. And now we're seeing that we're having, we're, they're making up the ground that they didn't make up, and we're actually lower than our neighbors. Because I think Darian was like one sixteen, somebody else said one seventeen, we're one eleven, right? So, we are looking at then increasing the fee to the hauler who's bringing the garbage in to one fifteen, that was, that was, uh, either one eleven to break even or one fifteen, that's a board of selectmen decision. Believe it's gonna go to one fifteen starting July one, so then the haulers will understand it, and then that unfortunately would triple down to the, to the resident to pay, because they'll, you know, it's pass through costs, but then our, or excuse me, our recycling and our, our brush and, and, um, construction debris, those contracts end June thirty, and we're going out to bid soon for those, and we'll see.
Okay, so you'll give us an update in the summer.
According to what we're seeing out there, yeah, we're gonna, there's gonna be a change, but we don't know what that change will be, we were already, we had been at the forefront of that. So we, we benefited from being on the backside on the, on the, on the waste side. Recycling side, we were actually on the forefront of it as to the change, most people had contracts that went past ours. So we got the change early, they're getting the change now, if you will, right? We've already seen it, and they've already had to absorb it, we had to absorb it a couple of years ago, about three, four years ago, we had to absorb it. It was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar hit to the budget in one year for recycling costs alone, that's what I remember.
Right, and Darian was still getting paid for the recycling, but they had a contract that was already.
They had a contract, right, they were in a better, they just, their timing was better than ours were at that point in time, but you don't know that going into it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, um, but yeah, so that, um, that's where we're at on that, the, uh.
Okay, so that is, so I guess come June, come July.
When, when the bids come back, we'll let you know, so probably in the May-June timeframe, when, when we're going to the board of selectmen for contract approval, we'll let you know, you know, so we're going out now for a co, for a two-year contract, we'll let you know where that stands.
Okay, and now open space mapping, that is.
Opens, right, open space mapping, you just, we just have to sit together, you know, possibly you, me, Maria, and our town engineer, she handles all maps in town, and she handles our, our GIS system, and our GIS consultant. It's a geographical information system in town, so everything has a spatially referenced, geospatially referenced anywhere in the world. We have a very robust system in town for that, and we just need to then update that map. There is a map, we just need to update that map and have Ty and Von help us.
What, what, when's that timeframe?
Anytime you want.
Okay.
Well, don't they have to update it for the P O C D document?
They're updating, they're, Ty and Von is not responsible for that, so that's S L R, who's working on the P O C D.
Right.
Through planning and zoning, they might not necessarily be updating that map, they just might be placing the map that they have at present, right? So, we updated our sidewalk map, gave it to S L R for insertion in the P O C D. S L R didn't come and update our sidewalk map. S L R didn't come and update our sidewalk map, we updated our sidewalk map and gave it to them, so. We can either try to get ahead of their posting in June or we can, you know, wait and come after, you know, the um, but that's, that's it. And they're already under contract, they're, you know, they we have a specific amount of of uh work that they're slated to do. A certain amount that we estimate, this is one of those estimated efforts that we can then just have them go do.
So the town doesn't have a certain time when you're supposed to do the mapping, it's just, okay, so it's not like something.
We're not, we don't have a mandate as to when we need to update that open space map that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, I just know that it's um, it was prepared by the consultant. And it in the two thousand fourteen document, we updated it when we kicked up the land trust and et cetera for. But we didn't include sidewalks, I don't think it was mostly just literally open space.
No, this is a different map, there was a pedestrian map associated with the P O C D as well, that's completely different, right? So we updated that map so that they could see exactly where we are and then they can then make their recommendations as to sidewalk expansion. From there, so very similar, but I don't know, I don't know if. At the time, that would have been Glenn Calder, if he updated that map or the town updated the map for Glenn Calder.
I think the consultants did, because I don't think the town had the mapping capacity that they have.
I don't have to look. The consultants did it.
Yeah, and I I know when we did the um, the uh land trust mapping, we, that was all done by consultants.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, it was done by Yale.
Right. That's something, I think Yale did this one as well.
Okay.
But anytime you wanna sit, we can just sit and start to figure out the path forward in the process.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, water testing for Bristow. So that the funding has been cut for that, but there is.
You have money still, you know, till June thirty, but.
Right.
Going forward, yeah, that was wrapped into our water testing, right, so if there's.
But I thought, but you already have the invoice for that, didn't you? Because I think we already, we prepaid.
If you prepaid for everything, then you know, then, yeah.
So it should have come out, we don't have anything in the future.
Okay, well, but yeah, but you're good till June thirty if there was any additional test.
No, no, no.
Okay.
And we used all the money.
Wouldn't you do two thousand twenty four and pay for it before June thirtieth?
Because because we already used that, I mean theoretically, we used it.
Can't can't pay in a, we can't pay in a, we can't pay for something in a future fiscal year and current fiscal dollars. You have to wait till July one, till the money's become available for work post July one.
Well, this would start actually in before, uh, and anyway, I think they start in June.
We can certainly contract with them from June to Ju- June thirty on something.
Yeah, so that's not worth it.
Well.
Well, if you wanted specific, if you wanted something tested right now, we could have Harbor Watch go back out and test it right now, if you wanted to. And update it if you want, or we can just start July one and then. But it's tie and bond as well, it's a different facet of tie and bond, but it's tie and bond does all of our water testing in town. And we can have them add any area that you would like and any test that you would like to see happen, we can have them do that. And they do our sampling.
Yeah, what do you mean, any test though? I mean, just E coli?
Yeah, we can, you can change some of the param, if you wanted to add to the parameters that that we have, you can certainly.
But you don't test pesticides, do you?
That I don't know.
They tested for water oxygen, they tested actually for three different categories that you don't test for, you test most or. The testing done for the city town is really E coli and bacteria.
Well, we we test for others as well, yeah, because ours is more on a, what's called illicit detection and. So we're trying to find an illicit discharge, right? So whatever that might be, we're testing for those pesticides are included in that, so we need to know that. If there are other other parameters that you would like to see tested at the time, we can certainly add those to their list and just have it, I mean, it's it's. They're almost going to the same company to be tested by everybody, right? So you just kind of add that to your list, sort of like Quest, right? You just say what.
Like the same laboratory, you mean?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
I have a question for you about that though, because a large part of the Harbor Watch work actually. Was done in concert with the New Canaan Science Team.
Mm-hmm.
And. Um, if this were moved over to Ty and Bond, I'm assuming they don't do that.
No, they do not.
It's managing, it's big consultants managing the science team, I mean, that was part of the, you know, part of the expense. For the science team to do it was that Harbor Watch had professionals come in and work with them. So know that it would not, it's not, it cannot be the same thing.
Oh, we'll see, that's, you know, obviously the the lab results were important, but me at least, the real, the real. Um, give back to the community was this opportunity for these young folks, there weren't very many, I think there were only seven. Um, to build resumes, to create environmental science and all of that. Hmm, that's really too bad for seven thousand dollars.
It might be something we can approach the Board of Ed with, you know, to see if they want, you know, they can help. On that regard, but I can't necessarily have.
It's during the summer.
We'll just go to the well of Shepper and we'll go up to the foundation.
Uh, but at least we'll get some water testing and we get at at process, so we'll. Okay, yeah, no, I know.
We can look at the past research and see when we need to, you know, pay more attention there.
Do you wanna take this on? Would that be okay?
Um, sure, I.
Since river.
So I work directly with Tiger on what we think might need to be tested, I mean, basically. You know, it's after rainfall and certain environmental impact incidents.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to see if there's any issues.
Yes.
You know, they, we did discover, I talked to Chris about this, when they they were presenting, they talked about the fact that there was no water, there was very little water. And I guess it was dammed up somehow, there was some kind of dam coming from me.
Oh, the old um, when that wasn't working, remember the old uh, so when the trench was dug to help Park Street or Park Lane houses with the flooding.
Mm-hmm.
And to bypass, but the, the thing to the pond, yeah, whatever it is was stuck and it was, when that just got fixed, it was filling up the pond again.
Yeah, yeah, so we, you see, so they were testing without, actually. It was tammed up upstream. So, um, you know, I guess attention does need to be, you know. I mean, either by the land trust or the conservation commission that the pond water or the water coming in is fairly. Clean, so it is a san- an animal sanctuary.
We're gonna um, I gotta reach out to John Winter, who's the executive director of Land Trust, to see if he'll come for the next meeting, meeting as well to talk about the stewardship.
Yeah. How how that's.
How that's gonna work and everything like that. Um, lastly, uh, transfer station brochure, um. I don't know if we need to discuss this, um. Yeah, I mean, that, so the Darian reached out to me, their advisory sustainability committee asked what went into our. The mailings with our sticker, um, so nothing, because they were looking for ideas, so.
We had the, we were doing the tax mailer, we tweeted him in the tax mailer last time, so.
Is this something that we could include?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Right, so once you finish it, you, once we, once we tweak it, we'll just, any sticker we'll get, we'll get this as well.
Okay.
I mean, we can still do the tax mailer if you want, we don't do the tax mail in July, we do a tax mail in December, because that's more motor vehicle. Than the July one, but we don't have to, it's it's nominal cost.
It's amazing the number of houses between mortgages and rented cars, never get these.
Correct.
It's a huge.
That's why we targeted the the till the January one, the September one, because. Yeah, the July one predominantly, if you know, every mortgage is for the mortgage company.
Yeah.
I never see mine, so.
I never do either, I never see any of them.
But it's a good idea to put inside stickers, so I'll just have Donnie, you know, put him inside the sticker package. He's mailing it out to everyone who gets it anyways, or if someone gets it over the counter, we'll just, you know, put a paper clip to it and say, here, here you go, you know.
Okay, I'll need to um. This was brought up at a plant, you came in meeting and there was consensus to pay for it. So, because it's in within our mission of getting this information out, so. Then we have to pull from this budget, which would be nice, um. Okay, so you'll just get, I mean, you'll just get the edits to me and then we'll.
Donnie was tweaking it, asking to tweak it today, uh, it was about an hour ago, I said, can you tweak it and scan it and send it back to me? And tell me what he had, we had, we had a couple of things in here, like the, we changed the cost on the brush and yard waste, it's now a hundred and twenty a ton. Used to be a hundred dollars a ton, now.
Right, yeah, and is it still one visit per day?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Within reason, right? So we have, so if somebody has a Prius and they can't fit it all in their car, they just. Notify us that they gotta come back.
Yeah.
And then we let them come back, it's all within reason, you you know, in that regard, so it's it's a, that's a question, but you know, the the three hundred pounds is. Is three hundred pounds, we we tried to do the, tried to make it a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty, so that if they had a mixed load of construction waste and brush.
Right.
Didn't have to then have them come over the scale twice, go dump the construction debris, come back and do your yard waste. Or you couldn't mix the load and find out that they were mixing the load and all of it was, you know, they put one twig on it, which is less money than the construction debris. You know, that kind of thing, because we saw that happening, so we just made it one cost, one price.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I did have was on the food scraps, like, because you had something on the food scraps, so the um.
Oh, thank you.
So if you just, if you wanna know, the uh, we we get this report every month from Curbside Compost, right? So this kind of tells you the year, right? So for the year, for the past twelve months, we've uh. Recovered fifty one thousand one hundred pounds of food scraps, which is equivalent to thirty one thousand pounds of CO two. Um, or thirty five thousand miles of driving, right? As far as like, you know, it's a removal from the system itself, but they um. So the month of January, they came to us five times, picked up forty seven toders for forty seven hundred pounds. And in February, had a little bit less, they four visits, thirty six toders, thirty six hundred pounds. So we're doing, you know, pretty well, we, like I said, we can. Increase that a little bit more, I think we'll get to the point where we're breaking even, I I still have to do the calculation now with the new data and the new costs that we have. Um, I told the Board of Finance, I would do that to see exactly where we are.
Right.
Town Council as well, because I think at ninety five, we weren't breaking even, but now at a hundred and eleven, we might be breaking even at point in time, because the increased cost.
Is is that a um. Time in the calendar year, I mean, is the winter much slower than the summer, for example? And people are eating more stuff that they di- discard, i.e. vegetables and produce in the summer.
I would say yes, yeah.
So you have more activity in the summer.
Yeah, based upon these poundage, we were doing, but we're doing better in the summer months.
Yeah.
And from what I've seen, yeah, um. Then we'll, we'll see, you know, yeah, but for right now.
Cannot be put up on the on town social media?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then also.
Very interesting.
Planet New Canaan has said that they'll, we will pay for, we always pay for some of it, it's just how giving you the check, you want the check. Anyways, we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, no, I mean, it it's, yeah, I also, well, we've had this discussion, I firmly believe that the more that we can do. To then promote recycling will then help the town in the end.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is kind of promoting recycling, making people understand that there's another aspect that they could bring in, bring your food scraps, oh, and then they come and say, oh, you know. There are other things that they can, that they can recycle.
The one complaint I will get about the food scraps is, oh, I get that, I was there and all the bins are filled up. So how do we expand it if we don't?
We've been trying to battle that, you know.
Okay, so you're aware of it.
Uh, yes, yeah, and we're, you know, I I've I've asked the guys to constantly monitor, we have additional bins. I've asked for a couple more bins from Curbside Compost, just so we'd have more on hand. Because now we're getting to the point where we've got, I think, twelve on hand and we're getting to the point where they're picking up ten and twelve at a time, well. I'd like to have fourteen on hand, so we don't have to worry about, we always have one empty, so I don't have to worry about someone saying it's full, if you will. Um, we do have a space concern, you know, where where they are, we can't put all all them out. And we also don't want to, because if the bin is half full, we pay for the bin. They've, the bin is full, we pay for the bin, so we're trying to have it be where you fill the bin, so that, right, before. Or else, because if we just leave all fourteen, people will dump them in all fourteen, it could be this full, I'll pay for all fourteen.
Right.
So there is a balance there, if you will, and it's it's more on a side of, I think that, you know, we have to be a little bit more diligent.
Yeah, if that could go up on the, I know that Walter Stewart's Market, they always post theirs, because they have.
We can do that, I, yeah, trying to find the app, I mean, I could put this on the transfer station website monthly, you know, about how we are doing every month and then. We can try to see if we can do it, I can't do one, you know, social media, I could post it, you know, I mean, I could post it every month and say, hey, this is what we're doing, I have no problem with that.
I think that'd be great, I think that would be.
Yeah, yeah, it's no problem.
I think also to, and when you do that posting, to reiterate a little bit, what is a food scrap, so that people um, start.
I'm bringing.
Or or no, a lot of people, oh, oh, they're surprised, I mean, you'd be surprised at how many people come in and out of the transfer station with a mission in mind. And they don't do anything else, they, they're dumping cardboard because they just moved or something, I don't know. The food scraps are just not on their radar screen.
No, that's fine, like I say, anything we can do to enhance, you know, one, the the knowledge of it, right? And then two, the use, right? So it's really that kind of thing, it's always, it's a constant education. For as I'm concerned, so more we can more increase their their knowledge, more use.
Repetition is everything.
Hmm.
Stabilizers will play that.
Yes, frequency.
So Planet New Canaan is gonna be at the transfer station April twenty seventh, giving out free compostable bags and talking about it.
Hmm.
Um, but I mean, that won't be all day, that will just be for a couple hours, when volunteers can be there.
And then I have a talk on the twenty second.
Oh, yeah, so do you wanna just, before we close, do you wanna know, you?
Well, it's, well, yes, I was invited by the Health Department as part of their Earth Day celebration to uh speak on um.
April twenty second.
April twenty second.
Monday.
About recycling and uh, our efforts at the transfer station, I think it'd be, you know. It's kind of a broad brush or an open, open dialogue as far as what we'll talk about, but it's more on what we're offering, you know, the what's in, what's out. A little bit to try to help that, and then to your point, you know, what do we offer and how can you enhance, you know, how can you actually participate or? Um, increase your recycling at that point, and the more knowledge we get out there, the better at that point, so, yeah, I I. I I don't wanna spend too much time talking, rather spend more time on Q and A, but we'll, there'll be a balance there.
Where will you be?
It's at Wavy.
Yeah.
On a, exactly what time.
The Health Department put out a flyer, so there's a QR code to, you need to register or you can um. Just email info at planetnewcanon.org to register.
Where did they ever put that flyer?
It was, oh, I saw it all over the place, um.
On the wall in my office, but yeah.
It was on the town social media, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And it was on the the patch, picked it up, I think New Canaanites going to publish it.
Yeah, I didn't see it, I.
Yeah, I've seen it.
We'll, um.
Or Earth Day events or something.
Yeah.
Which brings to mind the fact that the Conservation Commission has had a presence in Earth Day um awareness. And we don't have anything this year.
We didn't last year, I didn't.
And not last year, but in the previous years we did.
No, that's when the nature.
So the previous years was um.
With, there was something at the nature.
Then the nature center.
And.
We had a table.
Yeah, and we passed out a lot of things, really, I just know that we had it that year. And I know we've had it in the past as well, in fact, one year the Conservation Commission managed it, you know, we coordinated all the groups in town. Uh, for one Earth Day.
Think Pollinator Pathway kind of took that over and then the Nature Center one wasn't very well attended.
Yeah.
So I think it was after that, I think most of the group said.
They didn't wanna do it.
Yeah, it was just a little difficult, but then there's the the Tiger talk coming now, but definitely something to work on for next year.
Yeah.
I think it was just.
Because there's a lot of things that we could prepare that would help raise awareness at some of those forums. We have some of the old brochures that we used.
Yeah, so I've put that on the agenda for a certain preparing now, or next year, because it takes a while. Um, okay, I um.
You want a motion to adjourn?
You don't have adjourn on the, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Just, oh, do you, do you see that, sorry?
We won't do that, we just keep going and going.
All right, uh, sorry, let's add to the agenda, motion to adjourn.
I moved it, we adjourn at one.
Thirty five.
Thirty four.
Oh.
A second, all in favor? Great, great, thank you.
With these meetings, I wonder if we should uh put an out time on on them, um.
Start at how long?
Some are an hour, some are an hour and a half, some kind of creep towards two hours, I know I can't talk here because I was late to the meeting, but um. Um, I don't know, does anyone do that?
We, 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 we had the meetings for an hour. However, we're a chatty group.